We ready, everybody?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
At six thirty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any changes or additions, if they'd be kind enough to share them. Otherwise, I look for an approval on the minutes, please. Make the motion to approve the minutes. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That takes care of our minutes. Next, we've got a visitor, Ms. Beth Geese, Superintendent of Casson Manorville Schools.
Hi there, everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you for letting me come tonight. First of all, I want to give you some good news. I was telling Ian earlier, we are all for affordable housing, apartment complexes. Yay. We've got eight new kids that registered by last Thursday. They opened their doors and eight kids are going to be coming to Casson Manorville Schools because of that apartment complex. So, tonight is not about the apartment complex that's across from the elementary school. We welcome that. We think that's great. We're a little concerned that the garage door basically opens, and you'll have to come up and see it if you want to come up, I'll walk through with you. It opens right on the sidewalk. That's okay. We'll figure it out. As they pull out, they're going to have to be really, really careful because there's so many kids there in the morning. But as you pull out, I think you're going to get a line that you're going to be able to see. The problem is, and I think you all got the map, did Ian get this to all of you? Okay. We are very concerned. Our buses currently, if you go right here, that top line up there, that's where our buses have to swing in there. So, pretend they're coming off Sixteenth, they're swinging, their back end is swinging. You cannot clear that if there's any cars there. And we know that because there are construction vehicles there right now, which is no big deal. That kind of gave us an image of what it would look like if there were a row of cars there. I know that there's not enough parking underneath for everybody's cars. It should be almost everybody, but if it's not, we get that. But I just don't think that road has enough turn lanes or space to have parking along the sides. Could you show that one video? We have an example of a bus trying, and again, this is any day. You're welcome to come up tomorrow. You can come up any day you want to see this. As they come in here, if they have to swing in, see where this car is swinging? If they have to go in there, you can't swing wide enough with a bus. So, if nothing else, we need no parking on this side for sure. We prefer no parking on either side, just in that area. It's very congested. We are painting new strips. We are going to let people go left and right out of our parking lot now because it's backing up so bad, and it always has, right? It's never been a great design, but it's going to be worse when cars are parked on both sides. I guess the only way to explain it is to have you come up and see it, but it's really bad. Transportation Director Jake Schmidt is here. If you have any questions for him. We would just like you to consider relooking at this. We would be willing to split the cost of the yellow paint on the curb. We don't want this to be a cost for the city. We just really want safety. I don't know how you get a row, let alone two rows of cars in there. I just don't think it's possible. The concession on our end is, we know that everyone parks there for football games along that. They would have to find another place or go into the elementary parking lot to park. Sixteenth Street, I know some people have talked about that being a congestion area. It works. I mean, why change something that isn't too broken? But this area is definitely an area of concern. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. From one of the council members who asked me to relay it on is their consideration would be to make it just like Sixteenth Street where it's signed for no parking during 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. That's how it is on Sixteenth Street, and they wondered if that would be an effective solution so that those folks who do park there for baseball games, football games, could use it out of their school peak times.
Yeah. That's only a benefit to us. We are trying to make it easier on this poor, you know, apartment complex owner. Can you imagine trying to police that? When you can park your car, when you can't? We would absolutely love that because that only benefits our parents.
Now, one thing to be aware is, they do have a parking lot that's going to be there outside of the building as well.
That's fantastic.
So, underneath the park, I mean, they have thirty-six spots underneath, and they have twelve, I think, twelve or fourteen spots.
And that should be enough. It really should be, I would think.
But yeah, that was one of the council members' considerations. They said, you know, we've already got it signed on Sixteenth Street for no parking during those school hours because obviously, you know, it is a busy area for a half hour, you know, half hour in the morning, half hour in the night.
And even if a bus has to turn in there in those off-hours, that's such a great point. It's still not as congested as you're seeing there. I mean, there's just not that kind of congestion. So, yeah, that's a win for us. We were just trying to be fair to the apartment owner that I wouldn't want to say, oh, your car has been moved by 7:30 in the morning. Seven thirty is plenty of time, isn't it, Jake?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because our buses start rolling in at...
Well, they drop off about seven forty-five.
Yeah. So, that would be fine. The same as Sixteenth Street would be great.
Seven would be better. Seven would be better.
Okay. Whatever, what is it marked on Sixteenth? I can't even remember.
One thirty, three thirty.
Okay. We would take what we could get, for sure.
Sure.
Yeah, that's interesting because I, we were trying to kind of go the other way where, yeah. We are just so appreciative. This is not a complaint. We're excited that you're building things in town. We're here to be a partner with all of that, so this is not a complaint. This is just a, oh, I think something should be maybe pre-done before we get to the endpoint. So, we have so many walkers, too. If you come up there in the morning, you'll see it's a lot of kids. So, I think if that was just clear of extra cars there, that would be good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You looking for a recommendation to the City Council from this side?
Yeah. I mean, I think the Council is obviously interested in the feedback from planning its ownings, so.
What's the enforcement mechanism on something of this nature?
Ah, police, and then ticketing and towing.
Okay. But if you've got buses coming in at seven thirty o'clock in the morning, that's not a twenty-minute deal. I would assume there is a bit of a delay between phone call, getting a police officer up there, getting a tow...
Well, I mean, SRO is going to be up on campus typically, you know, so he should be able to respond relatively quickly to any call he would get from the school. You're right. I mean, towing is not going to be instantaneous. It's going to be, you know, he's usually pretty good about getting out there in ten, fifteen minutes, though, if he's working.
Yeah, but I suppose after getting one or two tickets, people learn, so it might take a little while.
I think that's going to be a learning process, especially for those folks in the apartment complex because I don't foresee that most of them are going to park on the street once they have that completed. But frankly, during the construction, it's probably more of an issue right now than it is once the building's done. Because right now, those gentlemen have, or women, don't have anywhere to park really aside from that. So, I think that would be, you know, forcing them to go a little further south might be a good idea there. Or, they can park along the access road, the alley there, so. I think as staff, we talked, discussed it, too, and I mean, we don't have any objection to that.
It seemed to work okay for J L H, and people got used to it.
Right.
That was one question I had. Anybody else have any thoughts, questions, ideas? I think that would work from my standpoint.
And I know we talked about it before we gave approval. We didn't have any conditions on the...
No, it was a discussion point, you know, seeing, obviously, as you know, this project has taken probably close to a decade now. And so, I think that, I mean, we're glad that it's moving forward as quickly as it is now, but I think we had discussed it before. I think we were looking actually doing no parking kind of where the grass terminus is.
Yeah.
Because you could still punch a sign in right there. And we weren't planning on going all the way down to the crosswalk.
Another way to cross on it.
But, I mean, it's a horse a piece. I mean, I can definitely see where, even around the crosswalk, you wouldn't want to have cars, too, because that might actually be a bigger issue than further to the north side because kids are crossing there, so.
Yeah. I know the, like Linda said, I know the seven thirty, three thirty deal in front of, you know, on Main Street, in front of Just Like Home Works. So, I would think that after a short time period that this would, this would work as well, so I'd be...
Well, it'd be nice to get it in place now before the building gets open because then those folks, when they move in, that's just what they're going to start with. You know, I'm anticipating that a lot of those folks living in that building probably will be new to Casson, you know, and so it'll be just good for them to start from, hey, this is how it is, don't have to worry about it, don't have to shift, or anything like that.
Anybody know what his timeframe in this parking lot is?
Well, the park, yeah, I don't know. You know what the parking lot timeframe is? I would imagine that's going to be one of the last things he does. I mean, it'll be once he's done with all of his groundwork and all that. They'll pave that probably next spring, I would imagine. I mean, I haven't heard a timeline update, but I know they are working every day out there, and they've had some pretty big equipment up there. So, I wouldn't be surprised if they're open in June. So, it might make sense, too, to wait until school's out to get it opened up, too, really.
Any other thoughts? Before I call for a motion, my wife works for the school district. I don't think her professional pursuits have anything to do with this, but if anybody would like me to abstain, I would be more than happy to abstain from it.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. Gotcha.
No issue here.
Well, that said, I will look for a motion, please. I'll make a motion to recommend that the parking be changed to seven thirty to three thirty to match Sixteenth Street in the areas highlighted. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Would be a recommendation to the City Council, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next up, public hearing, cannabis zoning ordinance.
All right. Let's see. So, included in your packets for consideration this evening is a draft ordinance, zoning ordinance that applies to the regulation of cannabis businesses. So, it's quite dense, but we can go through it together. Let's see. It includes several different things, starting off with definitions. Most of these come directly from state statutes. They're defined there. Let's see. Aside from all the different definitions, there's updates to the principal uses table in our zoning code. So, if you're familiar with that, it shows basically where each type of use is allowed in the city depending upon each zoning district. So, for specifically cannabis and hemp business uses, we've got all the different uses listed there, and each of them are going to be permitted with standards in specific zoning districts. So, you can see the I-1 light business, business park district allows for the most types of uses, whereas the uses that are allowed in the most number of zones are cannabis retail and lower potency hemp edible retail businesses. So, if it's not permitted with standards and the box is blank, that means it's prohibited within that zoning district. But beyond that, there are limitations for specific cannabis businesses that have different buffer requirements. So, I'll scroll down here to the graphic that was prepared. So, depending upon if it's a school, or daycare, or, let's see, a park that has like a youth-oriented component to it, there's certain buffers that apply. So, even if the zoning district would allow for that particular cannabis use, if it's too close to a certain school, daycare, park, that sort of thing, it still wouldn't be allowed if it's within that buffer area. And so, let's see, there's also regulations that cover the time of day, so certain cannabis businesses can only operate between eight a.m. and ten p.m. Monday through Saturday, and then ten a.m. to ten p.m. on Sundays. Let's see. And then there's other things about adequate ventilation, security with like cameras, that sort of thing. Let's see. And then outdoor displays and signage. So, that's pretty much most of the zoning ordinance specifically. I did also include a draft business regulation ordinance, but since this doesn't affect the zoning code, we don't have to have a public hearing for that, and it's just up to council on that one. But that gets more into the actual registration process that is required for most cannabis businesses. Let's see. And then different things like, oh my gosh, what's it called? Like when the police does their inspections and all of that sort of thing, those types of regulations is what falls under the business regulations ordinance. So, are there any questions about the zoning ordinance this evening?
There is a state license component. Is there a city license component to the...
Yes.
It's got a license, but a registration.
Right. So, the State Office of Cannabis Management handles all the licenses, whereas at the local level, the local government authorities handle the registration piece, which also includes like a zoning approval. So, anytime we get a registration comes in, there's going to be a check by staff to make sure that they comply with everything.
And is there any influence we can exert on the buffer zones?
Um, let's see. If you'd like to like change the buffer zones, let's see. Yeah, I think that is something we would have...
State law does dictate the minimum buffer zones.
Minimums, but we can be...
And county actually sets maximum buffer zones, so we would be in between the two of those.
Gotcha. Just for the majority of what you've got here in terms of defined businesses, I mean, the micro businesses, the mezzo businesses, I guess I don't have an issue. But on the retailer side of things, I guess I'm struggling to understand how we, the Quick Trip can sell cigarettes across the street from the high school, but if you're in the cannabis trade, you've got to be, I believe that was a thousand feet away.
That isn't something we have control over there. Schools are pretty hardline, dictated by the state of Minnesota.
Okay. So, are these numbers the minimums, or...
Where we could set the minimums, they are, yes. That's right. And several, actually, from our earlier zoning code have been reduced. There is a, and we'll see how it goes if there, there's a discussion to be had between the public health authority and the zoning power of the city, and hopefully that doesn't go to, get too messy. But our consultant that we work with, Brad Schib, feels that the zoning authority of the city, which we control, is going to be a preeminent control over that versus what the county does through their public health authority.
Looking at this map, I'm looking at the like school area. Is that covering the fairgrounds, too? Is that considered a park or a school? Am I not, am I not, am I not reading the map properly? Because it looks like it's including the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I mean, it's close to school, so yeah, it would be including the north half of the fairgrounds.
Well, I mean, it looks like it's including the entirety of the fairgrounds because like I can see where my house is, and straight across the street's the fairgrounds, and it's blue on this map, so...
Yeah, and that direction will be, yeah.
Okay, well, that's a good thing.
I mean, you could see the loop around. I mean, the measurements were made, you know, based on where the school buildings are, so I mean, it's going that distance off of the school building, so it's very possible that it covers the fairgrounds.
No, no, I mean, like, the actual blue area that says this is the school includes the fairgrounds, and it should...
Well, they do own the ice arena.
Okay.
I mean, so, I mean, that, the county does, so I'm not sure. I guess I'd have to look at it a little closer. Can you zoom in on that one, Ian?
I'm saying the zone should actually be a little smaller than what's shown here for the school.
I agree with you. I think you're right.
Not that it's going to make any difference, but...
Yeah, definitely.
Because it's still going to cover the two red areas there where the businesses are for Houston's and...
Yeah, so you think, you think he's including that as a, as a park, or what do you think, Ian? Because, yeah, you're right, it does.
But it's blue, it's a school, so a park would be even a smaller circle, though.
Yeah. That's an error.
It probably is. It's something that can be revised.
It's probably just an error, but I don't think it's going to make a difference.
Yeah.
And then I guess in the, in the draft ordinance in your table, you don't include R.C. as the acceptable zoning use. I just want to know if that's intentional? Do we want to reconsider that? Because a good portion of...
You can't do it in the residential areas.
A good portion of our downtown is...
If it's residential, you can't have it in those.
Our downtown is R.C., right? So, like, all of those buildings on Main Street on the north side, at least?
That's very restrictive. Unfortunately, there's very few sites you'd be able to do it. In fact, you know, one of the sites that they're looking at is, I mean, you can see where City Hall is there in the purple. Those are, those are allowed, but really downtown, you'd have a very hard time, you know, operating it.
Yeah, but I mean, my point is, is that the daycares might not be there forever. So, if the daycare goes away, that might open up some...
Sure, absolutely. If something like that, yeah, would close.
So, the question is...
I mean, if the tax or the, you know, the one in the shop, old tax office alone would change, that could change where they could be, yeah.
Yeah. So, since R.C.'s not included, that means none of the buildings on Main Street would be, am I getting that right? Does it mean, yeah, I think so. None of the buildings on Main Street on the north side, at least, would be applicable because they're not zoned appropriately, right? Because those look like they're, they're R.C., those all have apartments above them, don't they?
Right, yep. You're right.
So, is that, is that restricted from the state, or are we putting that restriction on ourselves?
What does it say in the table, Ian?
It doesn't have the R.C. in the table at all.
Okay. I'm guessing it's restricted from the state, but we certainly could check on that.
Yeah. Have to confirm that one.
Because of the residential component, I know that there has to be separation there.
Yeah.
And then the last thing I want to say is, can we, can we bump up the daycare buffer from five hundred to a thousand? Or is that restricted by the county, or the state, or somebody else?
Making it higher or making it lower?
It's currently five hundred. I think it would make more sense to be a thousand to match a school. I don't know why daycare should be less than a school on something like this. I don't think it's going to functionally make anything different with this graph.
Oh, it should, well, because you're going to knock out most of that purple that's down there. You really won't be able to put it anywhere in town then except for on the south side of fourteen.
Right.
I know that when Brad looked at these, this was what they're looking at in the metro, and so I know that he based the numbers that he's using off of the other cities they're working with. So, it's not individual to us. I'm, you know, council as a whole, and with your recommendation, you know, you guys set the buffers however you want to be. I think we, we tried to take what he brought to us and look at, try and be as flexible as possible, otherwise it's, it's difficult to envision a spot where you'd be able to actually do it at all in town.
Because it looks like the current vape stores right in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that actually isn't, that doesn't, that doesn't sell any cannabis, so that wouldn't be affected.
But you've got a retail outlet, and I'm sure there's some cross, I would assume, and I may be wrong here, there's some crossover in your customer base there.
Well, no disagreement there, but I mean, I'm just saying like this, this wouldn't affect them because they don't sell the cannabis products, so...
Well, yes, they do.
They maybe have CBD, but they don't, they shouldn't be selling THC.
They have THC.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's something we should certainly contact the police about then because they're not, I mean, if it's low potency stuff, the CBD, or low potency, then they're allowed to. They have to fill out a registration for that as well.
Yeah.
But I'm not aware of anybody that's selling it currently in town as a distributor that has a license from the state of Minnesota for that. Because they would have had to go through Linda, and she has the form. We have one application for someone who's interested in opening one here, but that's all we've received.
Yeah.
And maybe it's low potency, but...
Yeah. I mean, I know liquor store has low potency stuff, so...
Yeah, it's low potency hemp derived. It makes a very important distinction that that type of retail is not a cannabis retail business in the definitions. Lower potency hemp edible retailer business which sells lower potency hemp edibles, but which is not a cannabis retailer.
What would happen if, so we set these perimeters, then say somebody wants to open a daycare and someone has opened a cannabis outlet? What, how do we address that?
Would that be grandfathered in, or how does that work?
Right, yeah. So, if, like, the cannabis business wouldn't be forced to close if like a daycare shows up that's too close. Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of similar to the, to the smoke shop because that's how they can stand to operate even though the daycare center went into the old Chaco buildings because they were there, they were there first, so...
Yep.
So, you're saying that if something's there, daycare can still move in?
Well, not necessarily. It just means that the cannabis business wouldn't have to close if someone else wanted to move in.
I don't know what the licensing requirements for a daycare are, if they have to be a certain distance away from a business like that. I don't know if they do or not. That'd be something we could check into, but I don't know what their licensing requirements are. Ian, do you?
Oh, not specifically for cannabis.
Yeah, they may not be able to open next to a cannabis business, I would imagine. I mean, kind of what's good for the gander is, you know, good for the goose.
Yeah, whichever is there first.
I'm not sure if that's how it works, but we could certainly check on it.
You get an activist that wants to chase cannabis out of town, all they have to do is relocate their daycare business.
Right, there you go.
There you go. I mean, it's not that hard. So, forgive me, we don't have any influence over the buffer size.
Well, I mean, certainly, if you, if you, if you'd like to make, you know, you can't really make them smaller, I don't think, than what we've got here, but if you want to increase them, you know, you can't go past what the state standard is. Because the state wanted to make sure that cities could not just totally restrict it out of existence.
Gotcha.
You know, and that's kind of the, the whole state law says, nope, nope. Some small towns have said, hey, we're all out of here, we're just going to declare a buffer around our whole town. Well, you can't do that. It's not allowed. But other than that, yeah, you can, you know, look at different options if you'd like to look at higher restrictions than what's there.
I don't know. I was thinking on the other end of the spectrum.
Yeah, no, we're, you know, I guess, as I said, these are, these are the ones that we've been told that are the, you know, the best practices, distances, and they're somewhat different from the ones we were previously utilizing. They're lesser than they were before. So, I mean, we can definitely check on the R.C., okay? I think that's something I'm taking away. We should check on what, what that is, if, and I'm sure it's an easy answer, I just don't know off the top of my head. And then other questions people have?
I just say that I'd, I'd like to see the daycare bumped up to a thousand to match the school. Like, that'd be my preference. And if that blocks out almost everything, I mean, the entirety of the south side of fourteen looks like it'd still be available technically, but I think that just makes sense, like daycares and schools should have the same buffer.
Talking about a plant you can grow in your backyard, so it's... And I, I agree and disagree with that. The apartment complex that is right next to my wife's daycare, on any given day, you can stand on the sidewalk and get high from the people that are smoking it in that building. So, not that I want a dispensary right next door, so they've got a closer, closer frickin' kitchen shelf, you know, full of it, but, but yeah, I mean, and if we're going to, if we're going to go down that road, then, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can't control where they, where they smoke, I mean, you know what I mean? They can, they can stand in the school parking lot and smoke it until they get busted.
There you go.
You know, I mean, but, yeah. yeah, so I, I don't think restricting where they sell it at this point is conducive to being open.
Well, I think, you know, we have some, you know, logical, you know, restrictions, right? You know, I don't think we want on top of, obviously, the daycares and schools and things like that. But, I mean, state law is pretty clear that you can't restrict it out of existence. We don't have any current locations. I'm not sure we'll have any. We have a person who's applied, like I said, but, you know, they may not decide to pursue that. You know, I don't know that they will or not yet, so it's kind of hypothetical, but obviously, we want to try and be prepared. So we'll try and get an answer for that R.C. I don't think that's a problem.
Are there any restrictions from distance to a residential zone?
I don't believe so, no.
So, so for example, property's along fifty-seven that might be guided toward rezoning to a commercial district. So it looks like there are some that are outside of the boundaries that are shown on this map.
Yeah, it's possible that some, something could go in there over time. I mean, it's similar, not dissimilar to, you know, if Highway fifty-seven, you know, if that corridor starts to develop differently and some of those homes become businesses or something like that, yeah, it's possible.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Nope?
So just to be clear, too, if, if the current smoke shop that's in Plaza fifty-seven wanted to expand, they would be denied?
That's right.
Just because of the location?
Location, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where this fails, because in my mind, that makes more sense than sticking it over here by City Hall, but...
Yeah.
It is dictated by the state as opposed to...
And, you know, in their case, they wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be able to be a commingled shop anyways. They would have to have a separate storefront, because you can't sell those same products in there. But, I mean, I understand your point completely. You know, it would make sense to have those...
So the state requires that they have a completely separate...
That's correct, yeah. It's just like for us, you know, we'd actually, wouldn't be, you know, cannabis at the liquor store wouldn't be illegal. I mean, it wouldn't be able to be done, because you have to have a separate storefront, a separate business. You can't co-mingle those products, you know.
Can you do the Costco thing, where you've got the alcohol on one side?
Maybe in Wisconsin, maybe in Wisconsin, I don't know.
Looks like the silverback building is available. That seems to be outside the buffer zone.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, that's a good point. I mean, a good example. You know, we're talking about restrictions. The city of Byron has got a license. They're planning on constructing a new municipal dispensary across from McDonald's, right next to there, you know, right off of Highway fourteen. So, I mean, it'll have very good exposure. They're looking at it as a revenue source. And the council's talked about that. They decided not to pursue it. But, you know, some people would argue, you know, it's not a bad choice, because then they control, you know, they control it relatively well over in Byron. I don't...
They also get the liability.
What's that?
They also get the liability.
You know, I think one of the considerations that was what the council talked about is, you know, how does it work for cash flow? Technically, this is an illegal product. It's not something that's legal in the federal schedule of drugs. Financing is an issue, you know. You know, there are a lot of things that, that could be problematic that the city may not, I mean, from my perspective, this is a business, and the council's been clear in the past that it is better served by the private sector hopefully running this business and being successful and paying taxes and that sort of thing, instead of the city getting involved in it. I know Mayor McCurry was very, you know, when he was in office, you know, the private sector could handle cannabis. He felt very strongly about it, so. So we'll see. I don't know if we're going to get any of them, and I'm okay if we do. I'm okay if we don't. You know, it's not something I want to use, but there are people who do.
There's nothing else? I need a motion, please. Can I motion to table until we get some feedback on the R.C. zone? I guess we're going to do that, and you're also interested in expanding the...
I would like to look into, I guess, whether or not that's, we're allowed to do that. I'd ask staff to look into limitations on the buffer zones on the upper end, I guess, since we're already at the minimum.
Well, and I guess I would like to see a map if we do increase the buffer zone. I mean, what, what property in town are we excluding, and does it make sense to exclude it? So I guess if, if those are two topics everybody else would like to see some more information on, I wouldn't have a problem debuting it either. Did, did we have the public hearing, or... Forgive me, I will open the public...
A live discussion, and now we have the public hearing. Come on up next.
I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing. Thank you for holding, holding me honest to that. I don't think I excluded any feedback. My understanding is nobody wrote in comments, so for those that were not here.
Do we need clarification on that area where the, the fairgrounds?
Yeah, and I think that's probably just a grammatical or a topographical issue, but we could certainly get that. I mean, what we'll do is I'll ask them to do an updated map with that section refined, and then also, we can, we can have one that has, we'll have two of them. We'll have one with that area refined, and then we'll have one that shows the thousand-foot buffer for the, for the daycares, okay?
Perfect, that'd be perfect.
I think we'll just have both of those. You can see them by side. You know, that'll be good for what you're asking about, Tom, and seeing what's kind of pushed out of the picture.
Yeah, because if we're just pushing real estate...
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine it's going to be, you know, adding some, some restrictions in that purple area in southeast. That's probably the only area we'd really back out there.
Oh, is there a park in South Fork?
A what?
A park?
Um, there's a public park. There is a private...
Private, okay.
Private lot, a tot lot sort of a thing they have, yep.
So we don't count that for this buffer zone?
It's not only the state, it's not a park.
Specifically public parks.
Okay.
But that, that area, the southwest part of the new expansion for the Windsor Court folks, that does have slated to have a public park, so that area would be, would be bumped out of there, kind of in the southwest, kind of southwest quadrant of Casson, south of fourteen, so.
So we have a motion to table? Am I correct in that understanding?
Why don't we do the public hearing?
We did. You, I, forgive me.
You rattle in, and you rattle it out.
Forgive me, forgive. We're the only people here. I wasn't trying to be sloppy. Okay, there, there's no feedback to gather.
Okay, Roger that. So we held the public hearing. Everyone was heard. They want to be heard, and then we're close to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, very good. Just to be official.
Understood. I believe we have a motion to table. Is that correct? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Would be a recommendation on that front, sir?
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about? Any update on Mr. Norrie's fence?
Yeah.
Um, the update I can give you is that the city attorney is moving forward with actions, and there'll be some scheduled things that come out, I think, in the next couple of weeks.
I heard a rumor that he completed the fence himself.
I believe that's correct, and I, I prefer passes, so I think that's true, yes.
Understood.
If there's nothing else during the meeting, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.